Hey, welcome everybody to Toe the Line. Sunday, October 20th, 2024. Tonight, we are going to be discussing city council meetings. We're going to go into a city council meeting that happened in Jacksonville on October 17th, 2024. Couple of issues that have been brought to my attention. I've also watched it myself and I agree 100% that there is some unethical behavior behind the city council members. And also, we're gonna go over the mills that affect the property tax here in Jacksonville. For anybody that owns property, house, cars, trailers, mobile homes, so forth. So, without any further delay, let's go ahead and start. Where the meeting is, we're gonna come into the meeting at where they're going to bring up Kevin House. Kevin House is the Director over Parks and Rec, also the Maintenance Director, I do believe, for the whole city. And he is, in fact, the one that is in charge of getting bids and/or quotes for projects that need to be done for the city. The issue in question here is, is this unethical behavior? Because the people that they just voted on to do this construction is actually a city council member. So, it's a conflict of interest. I want you to hear what the city council members say. I want you to hear what the city attorney says. This was not put out to the public. This was not advertised. And I do believe they're waiting to the last minute for this reason and this reason only. You know, there's, there's gonna be a lot of questions from citizens, I do believe, in the upcoming weeks about this. Because from my understanding, they're, they're, they're just not happy about it. So, let's go ahead, I'm gonna let y'all watch this part and then we'll talk about it a little bit more.
For other purposes.
All right, Kevin, would you go ahead and come on up, please? Fill us in on this.
Good evening, how are y'all? Engine four was, I guess, totaled in the, in the flood that we had earlier this year. The new fire engine has been ordered and it unfortunately will not fit in the engine bay at Station Four. Chief and I worked on this together. We did not do a, we did not go out and do a set of plans. We just, I've got it like just a word doc. I met with four contractors, three of them I got bids back from and I'm just, I'm asking to approve the low bid.
Why did we not have the bids here in the paper?
I'm sorry.
Why did you not include the bids in the paper if you got bids?
Just when I, the, the other bids are here and when I talked with Stephanie, she said, we need the ordinance to be, just for the one that we're asking to waive, I've got the other ones here, I'd be happy to share with you guys.
Well, the only problem I got with this is conflict of interest. The bid that you're asking us to waive is a conflict of interest. And yes, I did call the Ethics Committee to find out for sure.
How is that a conflict?
She sits on the council, she's part of the city, she's gonna make money from the city? You can't do that, that's a kickback of conflict of interest. Call the Ethics Committee and ask them.
I don't need to, you just said you did.
I did. I don't have a problem with the firehouse going in.
Can we hear from our city attorney?
So, I would disagree slightly. If Councilmember Kinman had inside knowledge or she was using her position to gain a financial benefit, then I believe that would be a conflict. But as far as I understand, this was open to the public, correct?
And it was, I was the only one that received the bids, I'd actually received.
Okay, so I'm gonna talk over here just a little bit, just, and I'm gonna pause it right here. Because I believe what the city attorney just said is, is that she's gonna disagree just a little bit with Barbara Mashburn, who has clearly stated that this is a conflict of interest. Because Alderman Kinman, her husband and her own a construction company and they came in with a low bid out of three bids for $82,000. Now, she's going to make money off of this and she'll explain in a little bit how she's gonna give up her profit. And she's only, only going to collect overhead. But I firmly disagree and think that she is gonna make profit off of this. I have, in fact, seen the, the bid and there are no number breakdowns on any of the cost of materials, anything. No cost of nails, two by fours, concrete, rebar, siding, shingles, tar paper, sheet rock, electrical, AC units, duct work and so forth. Labor versus, you know, cost of per hour for labor or even an estimated time. No cost for the permit or any of that. So, again, Barbara Mashburn brings up an excellent point in this and the citizens of Jacksonville need to understand that this is what your city council, our city council, is doing. In this picture right here, you can see three people sitting in the city council meeting. Two of which, I do believe, are running for seats on that city council. Come here in a couple of weeks for, when, uh, when the election happens. So, city council, uh, city attorney says that she disagrees a little bit. Doesn't mean she disagrees wholeheartedly. But she does disagree, she disagrees with what Barbara Mashburn says just a little bit. Because it's supposed to be open to the public. But Kevin House makes it very clear that this was not open to the public. This, he made some phone calls to four or five different companies and he got three out of the four or five back. And it just so happens that Kinman is the lowest one coming in at $82,000. All right, we'll continue watching here.
The other, I'd received one of these prior to Kent, the Dave Kinman Construction, the other one came after. And I can, I'm like, Stephanie and I have had this discussion because she questioned the same thing. Like, look, I can tell you, nobody knew what each other was bidding until we had them all three and Mayor and I sat down and, and talked about it.
Can you share with us the other bids?
Absolutely. Yeah, uh, one was Houses Construction, who's done workforce in the past. They're at $84,792. And then, the other one that I received, the, like I said, I reached out to four and one of them did not, they, they said they just did not have time. The other one I received was from Big Rock Construction and they're at $99,190.
And the amount of the, when you're...
It's eighty, eighty-two thousand for the one, yes, sir. It's, it's building that new engine bay, it'll be attached to the back of Station Four. It'll match what's there now, wood frame, vinyl siding, shingle roof, sheet rock, heated and cooled, insulated, heated and cooled. I mean, it's basically, and the reason why the prices are so high, I can tell you, is because I was, every one bid, eight inches of concrete with a lot of metal in it. Because of the weight of the fire truck. I mean, we've gotta be able to support that when it goes in.
So, what is the difference between this bid? Are we talking about less inches, not having...
No, they all, they all bid apples to apples. I went through every one of them. Everyone bid apples to apples. And Kinman Construction was the, was the cheapest.
So, we're getting the same product, eight inches with the...
Absolutely.
What is the difference, did you say?
There's no difference in the bid.
No, 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 in the price.
The price is, is up there because it's, it's a twenty by forty building, but...
That's not what I'm asking.
The price, the price, the bids.
The bid, how much lower is Kinman's Construction here?
Twenty-seven-hundred-ninety-two dollars.
Quite a bit, okay.
From the next one and then it's from the third we received or I received is seventeen thousand.
And it was open to the public?
I, I called, and I didn't, it was not advertised. I called contractors that I've used and worked with in the past and asked them if they would give me...
I feel like you've done your homework on it, considering all the work that you've done with the parks with the tornado. Were the other ones bids or quotes?
They're, they're the same, just proposals, just estimates, same as, I received three estimates, is what I received.
Would you, this may shed some light on things too, explain to them the timeframe?
New trucks coming in, end of December, correct, Chief?
Last word is third week of December.
Yeah, so we, we really need to move on this now. Because there's, there's a building that has to be torn down, a storage building that sits behind it, needs to be torn down so we can put the engine bay attached to. And we do, we really need to move on this. It is, it's included in all three, yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's included in all three.
Isn't it kinda like what you said when we used House Construction during the tornado? They were at our fingertips?
That, right, right. And that's why you see one from them here as well, then they weren't the low bid. I mean, it's just, it's, it's people I've got relationships with. I know their work, they're gonna do quality work. And it's, hey, I need, we're, we're in a bind here, I need this done by the end of these, you know, before, before this truck comes in. I met every one of them out there and said, here's what we're wanting to, here's where it's gonna set, here's what we're wanting to bid. I had a word, a word doc, here's what we're bidding off of. They all, and it, they're all three apples to apples, all three of the, the estimates are, quote, we got are...
Now, you're, you've used two terms of bid and estimate, is this an estimate or is this a bid? So, if...
I look at them one and the same. One of these says proposal, one says estimate and, and two say estimate, so...
So, if there is an, any unforeseen costs or anything, is that going to come back to us as the city?
No, because I, when we met with all three of these, I was like, we're gonna have, and that, the plan was for me to come and ask you guys to waive competitive bidding. I was like, make sure we're, when, what you turn in is what it's gonna have to be.
Kevin, moving forward, could we, like in the future, have the, everybody that's listed?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, no problem.
I think that's kind of a situation.
And I can send that to you guys, I mean, they were all emailed to me, I can, I can, I mean, I...
Well, normally, we have them in front of us.
I've got copies of them here.
In the future, can you make sure that that's in front of us? Okay, thank you.
My apologies, I was going to tell Kevin, you just need the one I'm going with. But I, I did tell him to bring the other numbers because I think...
Well, going forward, we would like to see it in our packets if that's, okay, thank you. Right. It's kinda what we're used to seeing also in our packets, so...
If I can say something to Barbara especially, yes, this is what I do for a living. But my bid or my quote, my estimate, whatever we wanna call it, would probably have been more than what it was. But I did cut out my profits. I'm, I'm making overhead, which I have to, I have to make overhead to make my company run. But my estimate would have probably been more than the eighty-four if I had not cut my profits out. Because I wanna help the city. I try to do everything I can in the city. So, yes, it is my business, but this is black and white and that's where I came in at.
If you would, uh, all council members, please make sure your microphones are down and close so you're being picked up by, by the audio. So, don't leave them standing up in front of you, please. Any other discussion? If not, entertain a motion to approve or...
All right, guys, so y'all see there, you have a couple of good questions from Alderman Rains. You have, you know, of course Barbara Mashburn making the statement that this is unethical. She's already contacted the Ethics Commission, they've confirmed with her that this is unethical. The city attorney doesn't agree or will disagree just a little bit with her. So, then that means, does she agree with her a little bit? You know, guys, this is, this is unethical behavior from the city council. Again, I told you that this page was going to be to expose the unethical behavior of the city along with, you know, other city departments, the police department, the street department, the sanitation department, city council, the mayor's office, city attorney's office, whatever that we, we decide that we want to, to reach out for. And this was brought to my attention. And, and again, I think that this is unethical behavior. And I think if your city council is condoning an unethical behavior, I think there is a problem. I think that they are, they voted on it and it have passed. There was a one vote against it, the rest of them voted for it. I've talked to a city council member in reference to that. And she agreed that it was unethical, but, you know, she also believes that there's a time to pick your battles, especially on that city council. And, and I'm not in disagreement with her 100%. You know, I agree with her to, to a certain extent on that. But again, unethical behavior from the city council, voting. A city council member is going to benefit. Her business, her husband's business is going to benefit from getting the job to build an add-on to Station Four Fire Department down on 161 in Jacksonville, Arkansas. And it voted and passed, $82,000. The next thing we're gonna go over here real quick is going to be the, the mills. They voted on the mills. The city of Jacksonville right now has three mills. And that is what makes your property tax as much as it is. And it's from my understanding, Jacksonville, I think, has the highest property tax in Pulaski County. So, it's not so much that the mills were voted on, it was what the mayor said to a city alderman about the citizens of Jacksonville. So, listen to this and we'll discuss it.
Five, and so entertain a motion to place, ordered seventeen sixty-four on first reading. Motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
McLeary.
Aye.
Stan Singh.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Mashburn.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kinman.
Aye.
Rains.
Aye. Orders number seventeen sixty-four. Ordinance to set additional millage rates to be established in 2025 for the city of Jacksonville, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Uh, the millage rates being set here are the same, there's no change from our current year where we are.
I'd like for him to be explained, please, because there's a lot of people out here. Some of us know what it is and some of us don't. I get calls all the time, what is this, are they going up? I have to keep explaining it, so maybe if y'all explain it, then they will know.
The millage rates are property taxes. So, this is not sales tax, this is nothing if you go out and spend money. This is if you own a house, own property in town. There, yes, countywide. We have actually three mills we're allowed as the city council to approve or adopt. Five, as a city, we're allowed up to twenty. But anything over five to twenty has to be voted on by the public. But we are at three. They are one tenth of, basically, for every thousand dollars that comes in in property taxes to the county, there is a dollar that is given to the city for the mill. Is what it, how it plays out. One mill this past year, and it's up, when we say mill, it's not million, so don't, don't say that. That is the actual unit, the mill. One mill this past year would produce three-hundred-and-fifty-ish thousand, right in there was what a mill did. So, our mills are divided up amongst the firemen's pension, police pension, capital improvement. So, that is where we come from. And those are listed out in, in your, in your packet.
And Mayor, just so we clear, this is not an increase to the citizen, but how are we dividing up these mills? Am I correct?
Correct, yes, this is not, we are not, there's no increase. It is the exact same, the recommendation of what we are currently in now. So, no, we are not increasing property taxes. So, the city of Jacksonville is not.
This is just our allocation.
This is approving, we have to do this yearly by this date. So, yes, it is just approving the allocation.
So...
Yeah, this is yearly.
I have a question. So, I did some research because I know that we have had councilmen in the past that have been frustrated over this mill. Learning from that and seeing the transition from the library millage, which had a sundown clause. And our citizens expected that lower property tax at the end of that. But we had continued that, we had town hall meetings where there were certain expectations made that this would only be for like a one-time thing. But we've continued this on for several years now. Actually researching it, I, I found out that Twitty had actually initially voted no on this transition. And so, my question is, why is it that five years later, we're continuing with the three mills and not bringing it back down to what we initially had?
Um, I can easily answer that, it's because the city needs the revenue. We need the money, we would have to cut services and so forth if we did reduce a mill.
Absolutely, and since then, we've gotten the sales tax from internet sales, which is substantially more than what is on here. As you had described with mills, you know, we're getting a total of three dollars for every thousand dollars spent. You know, and so I'm asking, why are we continuing this five years later when, you know, everything, cost of living across the board is up? And we had that expectation as citizens, you know, in place. I, I absolutely know that every household could benefit just from having that reprieve.
You're correct, households would benefit from that. But I am not going to make a recommendation to change that. That is what we need to continue to be able to operate and to offer, like I said, services by...
Right there, everybody. The mayor says he agrees that every household could benefit from lower property taxes. But he is not going to recommend that they drop down one mill or maybe even two mills back to the original one mill that the city had. Understanding that, he said that one mill brings in approximately $350,000 per year. And we have three mills, that's gonna equal out to about one, one million fifty thousand dollars for the city. And if the city does not have those three mills, the mayor says that they would have to cut city services, that they could not afford to run, that they could not afford to operate the way we're operating right now. Okay? Again, high property tax affects homeowners, affects anybody who owns property, a car, a trailer, mobile home, anything with wheels on it, anything that's property that you have to assess or anything, get tags on, you're paying the property tax on it. And the mayor pretty much just said, yeah, he, he doesn't care. In my opinion, he doesn't care. And as you're gonna see here in a little bit, I don't think some of the other city council members care as well. So, we're gonna go ahead and continue and finish this out.
The city to maintain expectations of public safety, sanitation and everything else. It needs to remain the same. And like I said, we could actually increase. I have no desire to do that, I don't want to increase our, our property taxes on, on people. And you have to remember too, this is only affecting those people who are homeowners. This, so, now it may be passed through.
Cars or anything else, yeah.
But yes, I mean, like I said, we are allowed actually two more without a vote. But I don't want to do that, I'm not headed that direction, I don't want to be headed that direction. But we can afford to reduce it from where we are now.
Um, so, we, I just recently learned more about our reserves and our reserves says a different story. So, I'm again asking, why are we continuing this millage when our citizens expected that, that reprieve and we're still continuing five years later?
When you say our citizens expected that reprieve, you're speaking as if it's all citizens. When I guarantee you, the majority of the citizens in town are totally unaware of this. If they were involved and engaged, that would be one thing, but you can't speak for everybody. There may be pockets of it.
I'm not, I'm not speaking for all citizens, all...
Totally uncalled-for behavior right there. The mayor, the mayor completely says that the citizens are unaware of what's going on. So, everybody's sitting up there, almost everybody's sitting up there on that half circle. All those men and women up there, sitting on the city council to include the mayor, are literally sitting there saying that the citizens aren't informed and it doesn't matter. And in my opinion, they're fixing to take advantage of the thirty-plus thousand citizens in this Jax, or in this city. And, you know, and that doesn't mean you have to be, excuse me, doesn't mean you have to be a homeowner, a property owner. You can rent and still own property, pay property taxes on your cars, on your trailers, anything like that, on a boat, on a mobile home, or excuse me, a motor home or anything along those lines. You're going to be affected by that. But the mayor says that citizens aren't informed and don't care. And so, because they're not informed and because they don't care, we're going to take advantage of that right now and we're going to vote on this and we're going to pass this. He's not gonna add, excuse me, the two more mills that he could add because he doesn't wanna do that. But he's gotta keep it at three mills because the city cannot run or function on anything under three mills.
Citizens would benefit from it for sure. But as a representative, I would, you know, I would be a failure to mention that everyone who has spoken to me on this brings back that voluntary, or that library tax that was to end for 2020 and, and we're continuing this.
And like I said, as mayor, I'm going to recommend that we continue with what has been. From my position, we cannot afford to give it up and continue. Okay, so we have a call for the questions, is there a second? All right, so we are...
All right, so going back to that video, the mayor made a couple of very derogatory, what in my opinion's condemning comments, maybe as you wanna say, about how the citizens aren't informed, the citizens don't, in my opinion, I think he believes that the citizens don't matter. It's the group of the city council members up there that are voting on what happens to the citizens of Jacksonville. That's why I beg you and implore you to like this video, share this video, share it with people out there in the city of Jacksonville. Because voting is coming up and some of those positions are up for reelection or some of them are up, there's different candidates that are running for different positions up there on city council. And when the mayor comes around and it's up for, he's up for reelection. My opinion, boot him, get rid of him. But that's just my opinion. Going back to the unethical behavior from the voting and allowing a city council member to profit from a construction job for the city of Jacksonville. Unethical, commission has been contacted on it, the Ethics Commission, and they said, yes, it's unethical. But they voted on it and they passed it. So, the city runs on unethical behavior. The citizen, the city, the, the city council members don't care about what the citizens of Jacksonville think. They don't care that you have a complaint about things. They don't care if you don't own property. They don't care if you do own property, they don't care. They don't care if you're a homeowner. They don't care that the economy is going up. Everything is, prices are going up on everything. But let's just keep taking all the property tax that we can from the citizens and, you know, oh, well. We need it to run the city. But there's a problem, there's, there's other funds out there, there's other sales tax out there, there's other ways, from my understanding, that they're, they're bringing in money. And yes, I understand that part of this is for the police and fire pensions. But I'm also understanding that those are at 100% right now. And, you know, there's not a lot of retirees that are pulling money from the fire department and/or the police department because they go to other agencies evidently and retire. I guess I'm assuming. So, anyway, I just wanna say thank you for watching. Go to the YouTube page, watch the whole city council meeting. You know, get out and vote. Talk to your city alderman, talk to the mayor, call down to the mayor's office, call down to your city alderman and raise three kinds of crap about this, this is not right. Contact the media, contact the paper or yourselves, contact the Ethics Commission. Please do something because this is not right, the way that these individuals are treating and are representing the city. Of Jacksonville and the citizens inside Jacksonville. So again, I'm gonna say like this, please share this page, uh, share it to your friends, um, like it, comment below, please, I'll read the comments. Thank you very much and I hope everybody has a safe week and we'll see you next weekend.